So I'll announce that this meeting is being recorded for the benefit of all three of us.
Both three.
And the first item on our agenda is the receipt of apologies for absence. And we have two, one from councillor Fuller, who I believe is in Newcastle, and one from councillor Humphries, who is somewhere else, I think.
Lethfield.
Both of whom have handed in apologies, I think, on the basis that their personal commitments take them elsewhere. So do we accept those apologies?
We certainly do. I'm just grateful we brought it, yeah.
So am I. Representations from interested parties, there is nobody else in the room.
Hello.
I don't believe we've had any notice from anybody. We could all hold hands and see what happens, but maybe we won't. In which case, shall we move on to declarations of interest? To receive any declarations of interest from members and officers under section fifty of the Local Government Act 2000. So I need orders thirty-five and thirty-six. Firstly, any discloseable pecuniary interests?
I don't think so, no. I possibly have to declare an interest in relation to the gym. Which is, where are we?
Sixteen sixty-six oh four.
That's the boy, because I actually am a member of the gym, but I don't believe.
I think it's another interest.
It's another interest.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put that down as the fact that I'm a member of the gym. And I wouldn't want anybody to think that I was, you know, in any way influenced by that. But that'd be okay.
That's fine, I'm making out that. Minutes of the last meeting held on the seventh of March, these have been circulated. Present were myself, former councillor Dainter, councillor Neville Oaks, councillor David Fuller and councillor Stephen Ellis. So happily, there are at least two people here who can do what's necessary. I seconded all those in favour.
Jolly good.
You know, of course.
Nothing wrong with those. No, you're welcome.
I've looked at them. I've embarrassed myself by looking at them. I realised there was something on there I was supposed to have done, and I haven't actually done it. Because I completely.
What was that then?
I completely forgot. I was supposed to do a letter to the school. And I completely forgot.
Well, I think you might be forgiven. But, okay, do you want to try again?
It's the fourth. Right. Let's do those. Which takes us.
To this.
To the planning applications and hopefully, the first one is, believe it or not, the playing field. At Pavilion Drive.
Right, okay, can I just say, there's no point in us even discussing this. Because all it is, is about the sign access road, and we've already looked at that. It's coming up from Benefield Road, and you can see the running track at the top left of the picture. I just don't think there's any point in us discussing it.
The only thing might be, is there any proposal to limit the times on which traffic can go up there?
Yes, no, no, I'm going for that. They got, that's the access thing. It's a bit confusing because we've got to turn that, you know, that way. Yeah. To work out where they're going to be, but also, they've got all this access stuff. And those, the reds are in and the blues are out, and there are some, you know, there are construction plans which limit times. Now, I didn't propose to go into this in any way detail because I didn't propose to go into it.
No, I must admit, I didn't bring down the note of the times, which was rather remiss of me, because I meant to. Does anybody remember what the timings were? Or did they strike anybody as weak-sitting? Because I don't think they were.
They were all over the place, in terms of, but basically, they haven't got a proper construction plan. And the thing that worried me more than anything else probably was the possible access and egress to the A six oh five. Now, that's a bit of that, you know, you grit your teeth on that one. But if you look at the actual, look, I'm keeping this really simple. If you look at the actual construction plan, there's nothing wrong with it. I mean, they've got to build this thing, and you expect vehicles to go in and out to do that. What worries me more than anything else, I think, is not so much the access from Benefield Road, which is what this application is about. But about the fact that traffic is going to go possibly in and out. Now, my understanding is they didn't even do that. I, 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 I can't see, we can have a note, but the fact is, it's a construction site.
Is there any, I mean, I take your point, Neville, about, about the A six oh five. And the other thing that somebody mentioned to me the other day is, I don't know if you've walked across Station Road Bridge recently. The, the condition of that bridge is getting a lot worse from my perspective.
Wouldn't it be a bit worse?
Lots of cracks in it, lots of, and I've seen a lot of gem mix, concrete lorries going over it. I've seen huge, a lot of very heavy traffic.
Right, okay, well, actually, I think that's something well worth recording. Because that's serious, because that's a very, very nice bridge.
Well, if something happened as well, that would be.
Look, I think that's.
Well, yes, after our experiences with the South Bridge and the North Bridge, we really would be.
Would you not agree, chairman? I think that that is something we should say, we're concerned about that. I think we should do. And that's a really good point. The fact is that, is, the thing is, you see, is, I mean, to some extent, this is a relatively minor bit of development.
Well, let's work on the assumption, we're going to make no objection, but perhaps we could put on our response that we are concerned at the amount of construction traffic generally coming into the town over the North Bridge.
That'd be me, that'd be good.
And.
That'd be fine, because basically, I don't think we can do anything else, David, frankly.
Okay, let's move on. Angle Wharf, hanging sign, the background to which, of course, is.
Okay. There we go.
Sort of, it's a follow-up.
There's your answer.
Yeah, it's a follow-up to what we discussed at the last meeting. Inasmuch as there was this long-running saga of the signage at the Wharf.
Well, I don't know what we say.
Which led to ENC taking another look at the whole thing. At which point, they discovered that whilst they didn't seem to have any particular complaint about the signs that caused all the furore, what they did discover was that this one had been erected without any permission. And they promptly said, in fact, that will land another one.
It was up there in two thousand and fourteen.
Ah, true, but that's still within a time scale, they can take action.
So it's a retrospective application.
The fact is, we can't complain. It's there. I don't think it's particularly interesting personally. There is a resident who has complained, and I will pop that up. But she's got it wrong, the particular lady's got it wrong, because she's saying, she thinks there's another sign going up. It's been up there since two thousand and fourteen. So she's got it wrong.
I think that one is in keeping, I think, and it's.
All I can say is that, you know, I'm trying to cut this short, I, you know, we're not going to say anything about this.
I would think the answer is no, we just appreciate the fact that they've now applied to regularise the position.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good.
I would say that is absolutely exactly the state I would put it in.
Right.
Okay, next.
Pavilion Drive, and I think this is just a condition.
No, but there's no way we're going to object to this. The lady is Gemma Baker, Coombe Close is, you know, in the wilderness.
Oh, right, sorry, which one are you doing?
I'm doing Coombe Close.
Oh, right, that seems to have sort of shot off somewhere halfway down the agenda.
I probably have, but.
I was looking at that thing.
I've had a lot, I've had a lot of trouble with the ENC website.
Right, don't worry, all right, sixteen Coombe Close, access ramps to front and rear elevations.
Right, okay, well, basically, this is clearly, look, I don't know what the actual background to this is, but clearly, if somebody's applying for things like access ramps, and when you find that the agent is from East Northamptonshire Council, you can understand that this is all about, probably, and don't quote me, please, I know it's been recorded, but don't quote me. This is probably a disabled individual who's got a property up there and now needs to have access to the property in a different way than others might want to have access. I, I just think there's no point in us discussing this.
No objection.
I mean, I can show you a bit if you want to see it, that's the site plan. And what you can see is the proposals to just put raised areas to allow this individual who possibly needs motorised access, that's, that's the likely thing. I, I just, I mean, come on.
No objection?
No objection.
None, none for me.
Right, well, now that it's now a mystery to me as to which one's going to come up next, you can tell me where we're going next.
Why do I miss it? Okay, don't know, but anyway, look, that, that's the proposal for that, with the ramps and the, you know, whatever else. We don't have any problem with parking or anything like that, I've had a look at that. Okay, where are we going now? On the street, oh, yeah, this is lovely, this is.
All right, so we're off to the gym now.
I'll get back at it, okay. And in Galway Gardens Park, now, the first thing we've got to understand about this is it is on the Business Park. And that's the one that's off the A six oh five. So we're not talking about anything that is, you know, directly affecting that. Now, I have to declare an interest in this one because I have helped them to do this application. Not in a specific way, which is to say, the first thing you're going to do is to make sure your neighbours are happy. And that's it, really. Now, this is basically going to be a wooden cabin that's going to be built on the right-hand side of where the Animal Fitness is. And frankly, I wouldn't want to spend any more time on this. I only really wanted to put in about three generous because it, it crops up. And I'm, being a Latin scholar, I like things like that, of its own kind. But basically, it's something you can't really specifically find. This is, all they're doing basically is sticking a wooden cabin on the side of the existing gym. And nobody around that I know from checking. And I always have the cross fingers on this, no one has objected, because the first thing I told Philip at the gym was to make sure your neighbours are all right with it. Now, if your neighbour's all right with it, it's on an industrial estate, you know, for goodness' sake, are we going to spend any amount of time on this?
Not for me, unless anybody's got missing, no objection.
Jolly good. What have we got? Oh, yeah, no, no, we've got a low direction of a three-bedroom apartment, oh, no.
No.
Oh, no. Okay, this is where things fell off a bit when I was trying to do this. It, it's basically the back of the Lakebridge Sutton's house. And I think it's Phil Sutton who's trying to do this. Now, we've already looked at three applications to, to build properties on this area.
Is that Lion Avenue on the right there?
Sorry, Lion Avenue is too, too.
On that T junction.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, well, look, yeah, but Regis House is actually on that on route. And this, this is, what do you reckon, David? Third application, way before?
I don't remember.
There's plenty, aren't there? Now, the thing is, the neighbours are the ones who complained about the original ones. I've no intention of going through the detail of this one again. It's just yet another application. We never, we never objected to the other applications as a council. But the neighbours did, because they were worried about overlooking and all the other stuff that you normally get when somebody wants to do something like this. I have, I have nothing more to say about it, to be perfectly honest.
Are there any planning reasons why we should object?
No.
It's difficult to see, isn't it? It's not like it's going to sort of unbalance the street scene or anything of that nature. There is enough space there, I think.
None of the other applications would have done so either, to be fair. We didn't object to any of the other applications. I just don't, I want to keep this simple for you people this evening. I'm not going to go through the, you know, the next bit of how they're going to design it and all that stuff. I, there will probably be objections from neighbours, probably, okay? They're not on the site at the moment, but it's not for them to decide. It's not for us. It will be very, very difficult for me to come up with a planning reason why we, as a council, would object to it. But people will do that, they'll talk about right of light, overlooking, you'll get the whole nine yards. But that's not, in my opinion, unless the chairman decides otherwise. I don't think that's, you know, an idea to do.
Obviously, overlooking can be, but equally, overlooking is often relatively easily dealt with because you're just putting a condition that says no windows on a particular side of the building.
Absolutely, and you've got to steal the light from anybody, I don't think, is the answer.
Can I just say, that, that, I, I, we looked at at least three of these on this site. They've all been objected to by the neighbours. We have not objected as a council, in principle, to the, the building. I have very little else I can say really on it, I, I just don't want to make it really complicated. I, I think we should just, this is one, in my humble opinion, we just say, we have either no objection or no comment, or.
I'm not sure that it's a not, a no comment situation, because that's sort of.
I don't know.
Almost basically, look as if we can't be bothered to come up with a view about it. On the face of it, I can't see a reason to object to it.
There is, in my opinion, having looked at it, no reason about the detail, one of the reasons I'm trying to keep this thing simple this evening is that, having looked at it, no reason about the detail, I cannot see a planning reason to object. From Angletown Council's point of view, the, the building constructed, well, the, the, the building inspectors and ENC will take their view about right of light and all that stuff. We can't do that, because we're not experts.
Right, I'm going to suggest no objection, let's move on to whatever one comes up. Which would either be Land at Pavilion Drive or one oh nine.
Right, there we go, that's good, what do you, what do you reckon with that one? That's my best slide ever.
Nothing to say, that's good. It's a tree pollarding, that's, that's fine.
It's a tree pollarding, I think we note it, and that's about as far as it needs to go.
Well, I think nothing to say.
I think this one actually probably is a no comment, generally. Because there isn't.
Well, frankly.
It's tree husbandry, we have our policies.
It's straightforward, tree husbandry, they're not felling it. As I tried to point out in a, a small paper that I wrote about trees, if you're going to fathom, we should really get interested. But if it's all about husbandry, then we frankly should just leave it, you know, to, to the tree officer. But, I mean, that's just pollarding, I mean, for goodness' sake, you know, it's a lie. I mean, they get pollarded, it's, it's all part of good husbandry of trees.
Right.
Right, jolly good.
Pavilion Drive, presumably, basis, that's the last one that's left on my list.
Quickly, oh, that's the end.
All right.
No, 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 Jason, what have we got? I wonder something. Well, it was the Land at Pavilion Drive, which I think was. My computer went completely and utterly ape. So.
I think this is simply a discharge of a condition that's been met, if I've understood it correctly.
Oh, wait, well, no, no, well, I mean.
Boundary treatment.
I mean, honestly, that, no, well, you know, that's, there's nothing for us to say on that one.
I think that's another, another no comment.
Another no comment. The, ooh, what's that? It's called Land at Jason and Cotterstock Road, I thought I'd got that on there.
Oh, we didn't that one.
Have we?
Yeah, that was the one, yeah.
Sorry, but I do apologise, I mean, honestly, my computer's gone all over the place today.
Right.
But I can't see, the Land at Pavilion Drive is just a discharge, it's a C and D, which is basically conditional. I can't see that there's anything we can say or do about it. I mean, they are just basically saying, under the terms of the original application, they're telling us how they intend to deal with it. But.
It's a matter between them and ENC, as far as I'm concerned. Right, well, that seems to have concluded the planning application in a relatively double-quick time.
We're off.
The next item on the agenda is an update on the neighbourhood plan. The only update I propose to give is to remind councillors that in two nights' time, we meet again, when councillor Stern and his group are due to present to us the neighbourhood plan. I did spot that Emma had sent out all material today, which I actually haven't had a chance to look at.
Full council.
So there is really little point in preempting the discussion that we're going to have on Thursday night other than to make the point that once that presentation has been made, it very much falls to Angletown Council, rather than the previous group, to decide how and when we move things on. And indeed, frankly, whether we are happy or not happy with what's in there. I suspect we will need possibly more than one meeting to discuss it.
Let us, I mean, is this note, is this note back inside the council?
Well, as from Thursday night, all other things being equal, I think the answer to that is yes. We will obviously.
People would have left us.
We'll obviously use the group and their expertise and their assistance. But in terms of, it is for this council to decide whether we're happy with what's being put to us. Clearly, if we're not, it then raises the question, well, what are we going to do about it? If we are, then it's a question of looking at the next stages. And part of the stage of this peer group thing, the other side of it, is, is the public thing and the question of which comes first.
But David, look, look, is it setting in planning now, or is it setting in full council?
No, yeah. It's part, it's part of the terms of reference of this committee is to look at the neighbourhood plan. So it falls to this committee to make the recommendation.
Committee, you're talking about the planning.
The planning committee is the committee of the council that will be looking at it. It will be our recommendation to full council at the end of the day.
Okay. Now, I have, I have had a brief look through most of it today. Doesn't look a bad piece of work, but I think that for, for me, the thing that didn't come out on there was any sort of good reference to the infrastructure questions, which you know that the population is going to be concerned about when it talks about the, the developments and more houses than the required requirement as well. So that's just an initial, initial feeling, I need to look into it in more detail.
Can I just say, look, this is the big problem, I mean, I, I was working on, I wasn't called the neighbourhood back all those years ago, in April twenty twenty. I was working on April twenty twenty. And if you don't know why you suddenly arrived at Doncaster, why you got on the train in the first place, it really does take a lot of time to work out what, where you, you know, where you decided to go to. It really does, it, it's not an easy thing, you don't suddenly read a piece of paper and, and, and it's like, oh, all right, okay, well, there are three hundred over there, two hundred over there, one ninety-seven there, sixty-two over there, five hundred over. It doesn't, it doesn't work like that. You've got to work, you know, you've got to understand how you go through this process. And one of the things I have to say, and I'm going to be majorly critical here, is that we should never, as a council, have let other people, you know, take control of it. It's one thing to let somebody lead it, but it's quite another thing to let people take control of it. That's the thing that I find.
We know what the history is as to how we ended up.
Can I just say, I wish I did, because, because I, I lived it, I lived it after about a year and a half. Because I realised it was actually going nowhere.
Well, it has now gone somewhere, there's not much point in having a debate.
No, okay, no, I understand.
About how or why we got to where we are, the key thing is, there is this meeting on Thursday night, and.
Hopefully, people will read.
Hopefully, people will have an opportunity to have read through the material in advance, so it won't come as a complete shock and surprise.
I don't think I've got that yet.
It was emailed out, well, some material was definitely emailed out today. And there was something emailed out towards the end of last week as well by Emma.
There's, there's the draft plan, the neighbourhood plan is out there by.
Is it, okay, it's only that, I just, I don't, I don't necessarily look at my mails every ten minutes. I don't look.
Yeah. So we're not going to talk any more about the neighbourhood plan.
Thank God.
And the question that then arises is this. The review of our planning guidance was pushed into the long grass for various reasons and stayed there for a long time. There is the planning guidance document. It is an internal document, and it contained various policies, and it frankly has not been looked at for three and a half years.
Maybe it's been awful hard on them, isn't it, though?
And one of the issues that we need to think about is that there will be aspects of the neighbourhood plan which are to do with, for example, design. And it seems to me that actually, in terms of reviewing this document, where we would want to go with reviewing it is to make it integrated with the neighbourhood plan document itself. There's absolutely no point with the two things possibly veering off in different directions. So my view is that we will postpone, well, I deliberately put it on the agenda tonight, it was really mainly just to say this. And I'd like to bring this back onto the next planning meeting agenda. By which time we will have had our neighbourhood plan meeting, where we will be at the end of that, who knows? If everything is simply accepted and we're simply pressing on rapidly with it, then there's no reason why we can't look at this in the light of that. If, on the other hand, that process is an ongoing one, we may or may not want to deal with this, partially because of the two, this is of lesser significance.
Is that able to be emailed out? Is that able to be emailed out that's.
Has that been, no, but I can do.
Um, I I. Yes, can't remember actually. I don't know whether it's in the handbook.
I had a quick.
I think, I think arguably it should be. No, it isn't, but I think arguably.
I don't think it is.
And this is under policies, I don't know.
Yeah, tell us that. Look, I'm worried about this. Uh, because I don't want to overcomplicate. Um, the creation of the neighbourhood plan. I mean, we could go on for years and years and years, as we've managed to do.
Um, I have a very clear view about, all right, we seem to have gone back on to it. I've got a very clear view about how we're going to do it. The plan is a very comprehensive plan.
It is.
And it's a plan that, it has to be said, has been worked up unusually, possibly uniquely. With the developers. I'm not aware of another neighbourhood plan that's done this. Where it's taken on board certain.
Yeah.
Um, developers' stroke and.
Come on, we're talking about, no.
No, 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 absolutely not.
Oh, we are.
Well.
We're we're talking about a bit of negotiation here and there.
There has been discussion, but there isn't. This is a very open process and it has to be for obvious reasons. Part of what was looked at in terms of our discussions with developers was. Well, we know what's in it for you. But what's in it for us in terms of meeting certain objectives that we've set? And so some of the developments do include matters of what might be very broadly called planning game. Not all, but certainly some. Um. It will certainly set the cat amongst the pigeons big time. If ultimately the council then turns around and says, well, I know that you've been negotiating with this neighbourhood planning group, but actually. We're not in favour of what they're planning.
That's not going to happen.
Um, and we might want to look at. Changing some of the arrangements that have been discussed between them and you as a group. But it's certainly open to us to do it. And one of the issues that we will undoubtedly face. Is the fact that a lot of this. Plan has been developed around. A questionnaire that was delivered a very long time ago.
Yep.
And that was relatively limited in scope.
Yep.
And to some degree. If you ask the questions in a certain way, you will inevitably get certain answers. And there is a degree of that, in my view, around that, the way that questionnaire was framed.
It was raised.
And the policies that have emerged as a result. And it is possible, and I will put it literally no more than this, that either A, this council may take a differing view about the approach. Or B, and perhaps just as significantly. The great public out there, when we actually do a consultation exercise with them, may not like. Certain aspects of what's in there. And there will be probably two key areas about that. One is. The sheer numbers game.
Yep.
Because. It would, I think, be possible. To get away with a neighbourhood plan that was not proposing as many developments on. Um. Secondly. There are specific sites. That may cause rather more concern than others. Um, and. We may need to be responsive. Because we have to go through, there's yet more consultation before we get to referendum stage. And it's not beyond the bounds of possibility that if the public do not appear to be backing what's in there. Because when they actually see it in black and white and they see where the development goes and how much development goes where. It wouldn't utterly surprise me if we don't get at least some feedback that says, why are you developing X site at all?
I'm certain of it.
Right, and we will have to see where that takes us.
Look, David, we're looking anyway, but apathy. Um, I've been through all this because I thought. Uh, the development at the top of my road. And I brought every single possible spear I could chuck. At the developers to say, look, yeah, okay, well, right, all right, we know you want to develop this, but. You know, if you, you're gonna, you're gonna build a hundred and forty five. My calculations were that they should build less than eighty seven, I think it was. On the basis of the 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 general density of the of the properties. Uh, you know, that have been built by the same builder where I live. So what I done is I done an over map. Of where, uh, we lived. I did an overlay of the, uh, site that they were going to build on. And I said, you should be building a hundred and forty five up there. Uh, so my, our first response was, we don't really want it at all. So that was sort of stage one. Stage two was, well, if you are going to build it. Build it to a certain density. And if you fail that, then make sure the construction process. Is, uh, you know, properly controlled. Well, basically, I'll put it, no. I failed them all three counts. All three counts. I didn't win, uh, any of them. Uh. Every single thing that I tried to do was just. Steamrolled. By the developer.
But there is a difference, and the difference is. That what was being proposed by the developer was in line with the development plan. Whereas this time, we're devising the development plan.
Yeah. No, I don't agree, I don't agree with that. We 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 know, we know, we know.
It's a, it's a matter of fact, this is a development plan.
We never, we never, as a council, ever, ever said that we thought. That building a hundred and forty five houses up there was.
No, but that is a different issue. We're, what you're doing is you're going back to pre R N O T P. Now.
No, not, not true.
Well, R N O T P is what's given the developer there the ability to develop. But what we're talking about here is something very different. We are talking about, in essence, what is our own R N O T P. And it will sit as part of the whole development framework. And if sites are allocated. They are likely to be successful if they apply for planning permission. If they are not, there is at least a reasonable chance. That applications made for development outside of the areas that we are suggesting should be developed will not be permitted. And that's the whole point of the neighbourhood plan.
Look, David, look, I I look, I'm not being on the working party. I'm just horribly cynical. Given my experience with two developments.
Yeah, but again, I I stress, this is a different ballgame.
Well, okay.
This is drawing up the rules.
I I.
Which will govern the way applications.
I I I'm just horribly cynical about this.
But that's.
Of course, the reality is there's a lot of money at stake and the developers are going to. Potentially they're going to challenge the neighbourhood plan itself.
I reckon they will.
This could well end up with.
I reckon they, I reckon they will.
And even when the plan exists. It isn't a cast iron guarantee.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there can't be such things. However, what I will tell you is that if you do not put in a plan in place. There are developers out there who even two years ago wanted to develop twelve hundred houses.
I'm going to say we'll have two thousand down in the field road.
That there are developers who are looking at sites that are not in this parish. But border this parish. Who want to build a substantial number of houses there as well.
So this at least.
So.
Well, we've already got them though, David, haven't we? We've got. Uh, one thousand five hundred, um, of, of, you've got now Deanfield, that's going to produce another thousand or something like that. That's sitting on our doorstep.
Well, even closer to our doorstep, I think they're inside our kitchen.
Yes, though, you know, what you say is right. However, we know that the reality is there's A, there's going to be a lot of pressure. For there to be development. B, we have to comply with the core spatial strategy. C, we know that.
Whoa, 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 no, we don't.
Yes, we did.
We don't have to comply with it. We're going to have, we're going to have.
If you put in a, no, because if you put in a neighbourhood plan that is non-compliant with the core spatial strategy, it will be rejected by the inspector. It will never even get to referendum.
All right, okay.
So it does have to be broadly compliant. That means that.
I don't, I wouldn't broadly, that's what I mean, it it, but you know.
Broad, by broadly, what I mean is this. If you look at that core strategy. It would suggest a certain number as being the minimum. And I I would stress that it is a minimum, it is not a maximum.
It is, well.
However, the figure that is coming out of our neighbourhood plan group. Is in excess of that number. Now, that's. A matter of choice of those who have put together the plan. And the reason that they have gone for that. As I understand the thinking, but we can quiz them about it on Thursday night, is A. As a result of allowing certain developments. Certain quid pro quos would happen, which are believed to be of benefit. And I think there is also a. A likelihood that there is a thinking around, if we are too restrictive. We are going to have more grief from developers through the process.
We're going to get penalised.
Uh, well, I don't know, it's 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 not penalised as such, but the reality is that that if.
There'll be lots of representations.
Rule out.
Yeah.
Certain developer sites altogether. Then the stakes are sufficiently high that they are going to chunter about it.
Exactly.
If their sites are allocated for limited development, whilst they won't be happy at the fact that it's limited. It is opening a door, it is giving them something.
Yeah.
And it may encourage them to think that. For the next raft, and after all, at the moment, we're only doing a plan. That only runs to twenty thirty one. Once we've got beyond that point. There has to be a new plan. And in reality, there will be a new plan much sooner than that.
Yeah.
It won't be long after we've adopted this neighbourhood plan that we'll start to look at the first revision of the neighbourhood. Because you you've got to. R N O T P was supposed to last till twenty twenty one. We know that actually. They're working now on their new local plan to replace R N O T P.
Well, I think we need to strongly encourage. In advance of the meeting that people do read this, because my brief reading is, you know, for example, it says. The allocation of land to deliver a minimum of two hundred and eighty two homes against a residual requirement of two hundred and three. For the remainder of the local plan period to twenty thirty one. So we've gone significantly beyond, and it's more than two hundred and eighty two even, that's the plan. Here, so.
Yes, and bear in mind as well that with windfall development. You won't just see two hundred and eighty houses, you will see two hundred and eighty plus probably. At least another twenty percent on top, so that's probably another fifty six, so that's probably going to take you to closer to sort of three.
And I don't see a lot of reference to the.
Oh, to three four two maybe.
Yeah, and again, I don't see a lot of reference to the requirement, to what it is that we are getting in terms of infrastructure and support and. In relation to that, so.
Well, those are the sort of questions that I'm sure we can usefully start putting.
Yeah.
To those who make the presentation to us.
Well, I I I I just wish to say that, um. I'm just hugely cynical about this. No, I'm not, again. Uh, annual developing and I also certainly want to be somebody who's part of. Allowing it to grow, um, in a controlled way. But I know what developers do. And, you know, you're saying, yeah, you've got three hundred and all of a sudden you get five hundred and fifty. That's what they do.
Um, even more reason for us to challenge what's.
You, you've got to, I mean, you know. It's also about having any power. Now, the trouble that we've got is that we don't have any power at all.
Well, again, I would beg to differ. This is, this is a degree of power that we have never had before.
No, but hang on a minute.
Which we can either choose to exercise by putting a plan in there, so we can just say, oh, with it, get.
I am not convinced, I am not convinced personally. On an intellectual basis. That having a neighbourhood plan will make a scrap of difference. I'm not actually convinced of that. If I were, I'd be an enthusiastic joiner and work on the project. I I just think, you know, we're 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 playing in a. We're nowhere, we're nowhere really.
But that's not a reason to do nothing, so.
I, no, hang on a minute, excuse me, I'm a councillor.
Yeah.
Uh, I do things. Uh, that's why I'm here to start this evening. But one of the things I don't do is shut my eyes, uh, to things that I think might be going on. Um, you know, because I want to see them off. If they're not going in the direction that I think they should be going.
Well, we're on the same page, I think that's the point.
John, yes, okay, all right, that that's good. Look, I I I'm really, really. Look, I turn up to council meetings. I turn up to meetings of other things, I do other bits and pieces. I I just, I just can't get my head around this. Uh, I, am I stupid? That's the question I've got asked myself. Am I stupid? I mean, developers, uh, you know, annual is a little wee gem. And they want to build around it. And that's, that's it, full stop. And if we've got any sense, we know we try and stop them. Now, I understand that the lights of Philstone, uh, et cetera. Are doing their little wee bits and pieces here, there and everywhere to try to mitigate. Uh, the, uh, you know, the arrival of people here. But it will place, you know, quite strain on simple things like the doctor's surgery. Uh, I, it's simple things like that. Um, you know, the the the. I I I I shake my head because I went through all of this. When we looked at the hundred and forty five up here, the one seventy five down our road. Uh, we looked at the ninety five further down. And we're then looking at, well, hang on a minute, how many people are there going to be arriving? And then you go, well, where are they going to go? Where are they going to get schooled? You know, where are they going to get medical treatment? And you then start to shake your head and go, oh, this isn't going to work. Um. That's where I am. Um, look, I don't.
I'm going to say Neville, I could stop you there because I'm simply going to make this point. In terms of that meeting. Which is a public meeting that's been trailed and therefore, for all I know, there may well be members of the public present. What I don't want to do is, in a sense, end up having a debate about whether a neighbourhood plan.
Which meeting, which meeting you're talking about, the one on Thursday?
The one on Thursday night. I don't want to debate about whether a neighbourhood plan is or isn't a good idea, or whether we've, whether we have fears that it's not going to work. Because all I can say for certain is that if it isn't there, it definitely won't work. Uh, so I just want to concentrate on what's been produced. And to look at whether we are happy with that. And if we have questions around the rationale that took us there and so on. Um, and then we will have to have a debate. Now, one of the issues I did flag up beforehand was, well. Bearing in mind the commercial sensitivity of some of this, should this be a discussion that takes place in private?
I was going to make.
Councillor Stern, in fact, has said that he doesn't think it should be. Um. He seems to be quite happy. He seems to be quite happy for the idea that it takes place openly. And maybe Thursday night will. However, if the result of Thursday night is that the matter is going to be the subject of further debate within this committee, then it will be for the chairman of this committee and the committee itself to determine whether or not the meeting takes place publicly. And I have a feeling that if there is a possibility that we might be turning around and upsetting one or more developers, that we might very well want to have those discussions privately and not in public. But that's, that's a question for another night.
Now, can I just say, I understand that entirely. And I wish to support, uh, all that's going on, on that, on that side of things. Um, I, 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 I don't think I've done anything other than when I've been a councillor, so, you know, it goes where it goes. Um, I, I'm just, I'm just so cynical about it because it just, my, my, my work in opposing the Simmons up the road and, you know, down the road and over the road and down there and down there, you know, just sort of proves to me that, it's, you know, you know, all of the.
If you want to cheer yourself up, councillor, just remember that for Simmons didn't get everything they wanted. Because when they applied for nine to ten houses off Ashford Road,
They didn't get the hundred and forty-five.
And why didn't they get that? They didn't get that because it was not an allocated site under our RNOTP. And there was a five-year land supply, so it wasn't necessary to go beyond the allocation.
Okay.
And doesn't that, in a sense, point us in the direction of saying, we need to allocate land for development?
But one of the things, though, David, I want to say is that I'm really pleased, really pleased that this has been brought back into council. I'm really pleased about that.
I'm gonna close the discussion down because I just feel that we're gonna go on going round in circles if we're not careful. I've already taken a view that we're going to review the planning guidance document in the light of the neighbourhood plan documents offices around design.
We don't have an argument.
Which means that we can push that off into the long hours again, which tends to take us to any other relevant matters for report, and I'm quite keen to do this on the basis that we crack it, we've managed to have finished within an hour.
No.
So.
Is the answer.
Is there any?
No.
No. I don't think I have any, other than my apology for the fact that I can actually tweet that. I was the one who was supposed to write the letter to the school. I knew we'd agreed that we were going to write a letter to the school, but it was only when I reread the minutes just before we started, I did, oh god.
Can I just.
I was the one who was supposed to do the letter.
What exactly was this letter? I, I don't know.
Um, well, to remind councillors, in the minutes from the last meeting, we, we discussed issues around the sports hall, Milton Road, and the issues that had been raised. Uh, and one will remember that the member of the public who had raised these concerns didn't appear to have copied the school into it. We took a view that the school ought to be made aware of it. And so we were going to do a, a letter, um, to the school, setting out what those ladies' concerns was, and forwarding the letter and the photographs and so on. Except that I completely forgot to do it. Um, so I will endeavour to try and rectify my error and ensure anyone's sorting it out between us.
Is that the lady? I think it is.
Um, yes, I think so. It was the one we looked at last time.
No, I mean, basically, if, if, if you want me to do something on your behalf, I'm happy to do that if you're really busy.
Oh, I'll, no doubt I'll copy you into it because, um.
No, no, I'm just saying, if you want me to.
No, all assistance is probably gonna be greatly received.
The lady and I are in, shall we say, regular conference room.
Fine. Lisa, is there anything else that we haven't talked about that we should.
Come on, Lisa, anything else?
I don't think so.
Ah, one other thing I just remembered.
Oh.
Uh, it was only this. Um, at the last meeting, we talked about the pharmacy and councillor Fuller went off to do it.
He did.
And of course, had he been here tonight, he could have told us a little bit about it. Now, I know that he circulated some stuff.
Right.
Um, in terms of an email.
Yeah, that, that's right.
We haven't actually talked about that because if, the way I read what he was telling us, it seemed that perhaps certain work might have been carried out somewhere along the line that ENC were unaware of. But I don't know whether other people read it in the same way.
Right, but hang in a minute, it, it's a bit more complicated than that. Um. For, what do we get with this? Um, we're not talking about Newmarket, okay? Not Boots, we're talking about the Newmarket almost.
The fireplace.
There is apparently some kind of fireplace. But, uh, Simmons, the Simmons we used to handle it, say that, no, it's not there, it's over there. It was boarded up, but where you think it is is not where it is actually is, you see? So, um, they gave some information about this. Um, uh, I happen to know, uh, the Simmons, but I've not spoken to them about this particular issue. But really, this is entirely down to our conservation expert, really. Um, but he's gotta know what the, he's got to know what the exact, um, you know, circumstances are. Now, if you've had a, uh, something that's been covered over for goodness knows how many years, you can't get terribly aerated if it's, you know, the original bit is uncovered and, you know, you need to do something with it. Because it's never been seen for god knows how long. And you have to accept that businesses have to mature and develop. So, it, you know, it's another one of these wonderful balancing, uh, uh, pieces.
I totally agree with you in the sense that, you know, we, we, we're all aware of archaeological treasures that are sort of excavated, exposed, then covered over again. Because we're quite happy to leave them in situ and protect them. And to some extent, you know, if, if the fireplace is boarded up, it's still there and it could still, in due course, be exposed again. But once it's gone, it's gone. And the only thing that struck me about it was whether or not actually we should forward on to the conservation officer, David Fuller's email when he sent us back his little report and just say that, you know, at the request of them, a councillor did visit.
I think that would be appropriate to do.
We just want to forward you what he said and then leave it now to the conservation officer there.
The, 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 the people who, the people who want to do this, I think, are quite genuine. Um, frankly, um, I've had an email from, uh, what's his name, Ziegbaak or something.
Yeah.
Um, uh. The only thing you can really do, to be honest, is to go down there, you know, with the conservation officer and say, you know, what do you think? But if you, it's, it's, look, I will, look, can I just say, I have the utmost regard for, uh, and, and respect for our conservation officer. And I've had a load of arguments with him over the years, particularly with the drill hall, that was a classic. I managed to get that deed listed so we could sell it. Um, because I said he's got no architectural, whatever. Um. He didn't agree with me, so we had a bit of a ding-dong on that one. So it doesn't mean to say that I always agree with his position. But if you look at places, streets are pulled down. Most of the streets in this town, they've all been modified enormously over the years, enormously. Um, particularly, uh, the houses down by the courthouse down the street there. I mean, they've had, they've knocked out loads of walls and god knows what else. Because people want to have things like showers these days.
I think that's a reasonable comment, and I know for a fact that in Ashton, the cottages around the green, there are now grade two listed. The interiors are being completely gutted.
I would.
To allow for more modern bathrooms, to allow for more.
Absolutely.
Sort of thing, so.
But I mean, the thing is, that's been happening since the living things were built.
Yeah.
Well, how does everybody feel about my suggestion? We should be forwarding this on to, to, to the conservation. Just forwarding on David Fuller's email, his little report that he sent in afterwards.
I, I think so.
And let, let Lloyd have it.
Poor Lisa, you know, you've got a whole load of, you know, we've been rabbiting over ages, I think, but you, you can summarise it very simply.
Well, I'm sure this is going, actually, the minutes will be very brief, um, but I do think I.
Chop, chop, chop them big time, for goodness sake.
I think that point was worth just making, even though unfortunately it has meant that it's now gone slightly beyond.
Oh, yeah.
David, we've gone over an hour.
We have, but I am gonna call it a halt at this point, and thank you all for your attendance. And it is still one of the quicker planning meetings we've had.
I can say, uh, enjoy your time at Kingsley Court or wherever you're going.